So I got recording pause, so.
Um, so several years like. Yeah.
Okay.
And then Tommy Brooks. And then basically, once Tommy says his piece and he turns it over to me, then you can switch it to Zoom titles and we'll go through my staff report.
Okay. So that everybody can see what's going on. They're all in here. All right, now I'm just waiting for people to drop in.
Yeah, and yeah, we got about 12 minutes until anybody probably show up.
Are any of these people, do any of these people have to be timed?
Um, no, we didn't discuss any time limits. Yeah, so only promote Jeff is.
Be ready to defend.
Yeah.
And I will see that up here.
Yep.
Is Ian, do you want me to? And Tommy's.
Just promote Tommy for now.
Hi, this is Tommy Brooks. I wanted to do a mic check and then also alert you guys that my video has been disabled. Uh, so some setting needs to be changed.
Roger that. We can hear you, Tommy. I'll get your, uh, your video fixed here in a sec.
Thank you.
Hearings Officer Brooks, do you have your, um, your video turned on at the moment?
Uh, no, I can try again if you'd like me to now.
Yeah, try it now and see if it worked. Perfect.
All right. All right, it looks like we're already recording, uh, so we will go ahead and go on the record. Time is 6:00 PM and this is the hearing for Deschutes County file numbers 247-23444LM and 247-23659V. My name is Tommy Brooks and I am the hearings officer in this matter. We're holding this hearing in a hybrid format, so before we turn to the substance of the hearing, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Wilson to describe how the electronic participation process works.
Thank you, hearings Officer Brooks. For the record, my name is Ben Wilson, Assistant Planner with the Deschutes County Planning Division. The item before the hearings officer is an area variance for an existing residential accessory structure that does not meet the 20-foot front yard setback requirement. Today's hearing will proceed as follows. First, staff will explain the hearing format and how to testify at today's hearing, followed by a brief presentation on the application. Then the testimony portion of the hearing will begin. The applicant will present first. Next, persons in support will testify. Then those in opposition will testify. Afterward, the applicant will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony and finally, staff can make closing comments. This is a hybrid public hearing with both in-person and remote participation. Before starting your testimony, please provide your first and last name as well as your mailing address. For our in-person participants, if you wish to testify, please add or please add your name to the sign-in sheet. I will use this list to call up participants for their testimony. After your name is called, please come up to one of the tables at the front of the room before beginning your testimony. For our remote participants, if you want to testify, you must be logged into Zoom or have called in using the Zoom dial-in option. When hearings Officer Brooks asks if anyone intending remotely would like to testify, you will need to use the raise hand feature to notify staff. To do this, you need to press not, you need to press the raise hand button on your computer or smart device, or if you called in, dial star nine. In addition to oral testimony, if anyone has written testimony to submit, please hand it to me. If you are in person, please submit your written testimony to me after your testimony. If you are participating remotely, you can submit your written testimony via email to me at ben.wilson@deschutes.org. Hearings Officer Brooks and staff are responsible for conducting an orderly hearing. Any testimony or behavior which is inappropriate will be addressed and may result in that member of the public being removed from the hearing. Are there any objections to the format of the hearing? If you are attending remotely and have an objection, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will, uh, turn the hearing over to hearings Officer Brooks.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Uh, as just described, we are following the normal hearing procedures in the county's code and I will provide sufficient opportunity for everyone to participate at the appropriate time. This application is being considered through a quasi judicial process. I will consider only the factual evidence that is in the record. I will then apply those facts to any relevant provisions of the county's comprehensive plan and land use regulations. The standards and applicable criteria that are relevant to this hearing were identified in the public notice that announced the hearing. They're also set forth in the staff report. The public notice and the staff report are posted on the county's website and they're also available directly from staff upon request. It is important that you direct all your testimony to the standards and applicable criteria. If you believe a criterion applies that was not listed, you may address the unlisted criterion. However, I urge you to also explain why the criterion must apply and to do so with specificity so that other participants may respond and so that I can address that issue in my decision. The failure to raise an issue with enough detail that enables me or the other participants to respond precludes your ability to appeal that issue to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Also, the failure to raise a constitutional or other issue relating to any proposed conditions of approval with enough detail that allows me to respond to that issue in my decision precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. As I just noted, I serve as the county's hearings officer in this matter and in that role, my job is to be a neutral decision maker. Thus, while I have a contract with the county to serve in this role, I am obligated to remain impartial and I do not represent the county's interests or the interests of any other participant. To that end, I'll state for the record that I do not have any relationship with the applicant. I am not aware of any connections I may have to other participants in this proceeding that would prevent me from remaining impartial and I do not have any ex parte contacts to disclose. I have communicated with staff, but only to discuss the particulars of today's hearing and not the substance of the application. Uh, so that we can preside over this and so I can preside over this in an efficient manner. I would like to determine how many people are signed up to testify, both in the hearing room and online.
Nobody in the room, hearings Officer Brooks. And if you're online, could you please raise your hand if you wish to testify at tonight's hearing? Yeah, the applicant, so one person is, is going to testify remotely and it sounds like also the property owner, so two.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so we can go ahead and get started. Before we begin, uh, does anyone wish to challenge my ability to hear this matter or to challenge the county's jurisdiction over this matter?
Nobody raised their hand on Zoom.
All right, thank you. So, uh, with, with no objections, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Wilson, to deliver the staff report.
Thanks, hearings Officer Brooks. The subject property is located at 16299 Bear Lane and is developed with an existing single-family residence and detached residential accessory structure. For the site plan provided by the applicant, you can see the existing accessory structure highlighted in red does not meet the 20-foot front yard setback requirement, which is illustrated by the dash lines inside the subject property. For this reason, the applicant is requesting an area variance to this requirement. As outlined in the staff report, staff identified a number of issue areas associated with the application and the approval criteria. One, it is unclear if the applicant has met their burden of proof with respect to the private expense to move or reconstruct the building versus the public benefit of complying with the setback requirement. Two, staff does not believe the applicant described a condition unique to the site. And three, staff finds the applicant knew or should have known of the requirement at the time of construction. For this reason, staff believes this is a self-created difficulty. All record materials are published at the following webpage displayed on the screen. And finally, staff is available for any questions from the hearings officer.
I think, I, I think I do have one question for staff just upfront, so I can, um, kind of understand what some of the issues are in this case. Um, there was discussion in a lot of materials about sort of the, the purpose of the setback. Uh, one of the positions that the applicant has taken, at least with respect to the fact that setbacks, um, reserve or potentially provide space for additional, uh, right-of-way in the future, in this case along Bear Lane. Uh, I understand the applicant's position to be that that's unlikely to happen, uh, because of the, the street system here. I just, um, I didn't know if staff had a response to that, um, or any other detail about the, the purpose of a setback with respect to, um, potential transportation improvements.
Yeah, thanks, hearings Officer Brooks. Um, so at least as far as staff's understanding, um, the applicant, you know, pretty much touched on it in their application. Um, you know, setbacks are mostly for aesthetic purposes and what you just mentioned with road right-of-way dedication. Um, you know, there's nothing in the record. We didn't get anything from the road department that indicated that they, you know, foresaw an issue with, with that. Um, but that being said, everything, you know, that I have to say is, is pretty much in the record. Um.
Okay. Uh, thank you. That's the only question I have for staff, so, uh, we can move next to the applicant's presentation.
I'm muting. Okay, now can everyone hear me?
I can hear you.
Perfect. Um, my name is Sarah Burgby. I am the owner and principal architect of enclave architecture here in Bend. Uh, for the record, my mailing address is 61535 South Highway 97, Suite 5699, Bend, Oregon, 97702. I've been working with Jeff and Linda Bailey, the owners of the subject property, on an addition that would connect their existing dwelling and existing garage. Sorry, started in the video there. Um, during the landscape management completeness process, it was determined that the existing garage was constructed within the front yard setback and a major area variance will be required in order for the county to approve the proposed dwelling addition. I understand that hearings Officer Brooks has had a chance to review the burden of proof statement that was submitted last month. So rather than repeating the informations from that, I'll focus in my statement here on the concerns that Ben mentioned from the staff report. Uh, and for simplicity, I'm going to refer to the accessory structure primarily as the garage. The first concern noted in the staff reports is that the burden of truth did not clearly identify practical difficulties that would have prevented the structure from meeting the setback requirement at the time of disconstruction. Um, as I wasn't involved in that project, I can't speak adequately to that issue, so I'm going to defer that to the property owner. He plans to speak after I've addressed all of the staff report concerns. Next, the staff report states that an argument comparing the private expense and public benefit is missing from the burden of proof. There were four items addressed here: public safety, neighborhood aesthetics, right-of-way expansion capabilities, and monetary cost. Public safety and neighborhood aesthetics were both clearly addressing the burden of proof and they clearly show that there is no true impact to the public benefit with the, the garage it is as it is currently located. There is, however, a cost to the owner in each of these items as reducing the space between the dwelling and garage will reduce the clear space available to the owner on the property. Therefore, the cost to the owner to meet the setback requirements would exceed the public benefits of having that setback requirement or imposing it. In regards to the potential to widen the white, widen the right-of-way, the only place that it seems there would be a benefit to the public to widen this particular right-of-way is at the cul-de-sac portion of the street. This would allow for safer, faster turnaround of public vehicles. However, this property does not front the cul-de-sac and increasing the right-of-way along this portion of the road would actually cause a disadvantage to the public as well as the owner of this particular property, since as many as 18 property owners could have their properties reduced by an unnecessary right-of-way increase. Therefore, the cost to the owner to increase the right-of-way would indeed exceed a benefit to the public. The last point here that the staff reports addressed is the monetary cost to the owner versus the public. As stated in the burden of proof, the owner's current contractor estimates a monetary cost of $40,000 to $50,000 to have brought the garage into compliance at the time of construction and $80,000 to $100,000 to do so today. However, there is no monetary benefit to the public for the garage to remain in its current location. Um, as the current location allows for space, adequate space for a significant addition to the dwelling, there will actually be a public monetary benefit to the garage's current location since the dwelling addition will allow for an increase, increase to the taxes of the subject property. Therefore, the monetary cost to the owner is significantly greater than the monetary benefit to the public. Or it's not necessarily greater, but it works a lot hand in hand with the monetary benefit to the public. The third major item the staff report addresses is a concern that the difficulty described. The contractor's inaccurately measuring the setback from the plowed edge of the road rather than the property line is not unique to the subject property. The report stated, "It is reasonable to assume that snow and snow removal occurs in a similar nature along Bear Lane", implying that there would be a straight line and the snow would be removed, uh, at a standard distance from the property line. I've driven unimproved roads in both the county and the city in the winter and I can attest that plowing is not always done in a straight line along these roads, particularly winter road curves as Bear Lane does. The snow plows often don't curve the plowed area along the same curvature of the road itself. Therefore, it is reasonable to believe that the plowed edge of the road was not consistent at each property and was unique to this site. The staff report also makes the point that setbacks are to be measured from the property line rather than the road edge. Uh, this is a very accurate statement and I can only speculate that the builder of the garage assumed a property tight road edge when performing his measurements. Had this been the case and had plowing been performed in a straight line along the edge of the road, the structure would likely have been constructed well within the permitted building area. Lastly, the staff report notes the property owner rather than the builder is ultimately responsible for enforcing the setback. However, earlier in the staff report, it's noted that not even building inspectors have the expertise to confirm building setbacks on sites. It's relatively, there is rather unrealistic to assume that a property owner would have the ability to perform measurements that even the building inspectors who visit multiple sites daily are not qualified to do. Now I'm going to turn the conversation over to Jeff Bailey, owner of the property, to provide additional context.
Hello, can anyone hear me?
We can hear you fine.
Okay, my name is Jeff Bailey. Um, I, my wife and I are trustees of the property that is held within a family trust. Our permanent mailing address is 312 East Wanderview Terrace Lane in Spokane. Our permanent mailing address is three, one, two, East Wanderview Terrace Lane in Spokane, Washington. Um, I I guess I'd like to follow up on a couple of things that that Sarah brought up and then bring up some other information. Um. She talked about the garage that was built in, I believe, twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen originally. And and that's the the issue with the county not wanting us to move forward with the connection of the home to the garage because it is uh too close to the front property line. Um, I spoke with the builder when we realized that this was an issue, and he senses out of business, but we had a a fairly thorough conversation about it. And he said at the time that he built it, there was a fair amount of snow on the ground. And when they excavated, they did the best they could as far as measurements. Um, he also reiterated that he had to identify what he believed were the property lines between myself and the property directly to the north, which is owned by Stephen Heather Zink, as well as the front. He did that and the inspector that came out to inspect uh for the footings of the garage felt that we were apparently within um the allowances or the requirements for for uh the placement of that foundation. So, um, the the garage has been in place, like I said, for four to five years now. Um, the issue really has only been raised because we want to do this expansion. I have spoken with most of the neighbors along the road, um, particularly to the north and the south, directly on the same side of the road that we are on. Stephen Heather Zink, who are to the north, fully support us moving forward with this and have no issue with the garage in the place it is or any expansion of the garage to the home. The family that owns all of the property all the way to the cul-de-sac um, on the south side of our property, the Dale and Jennifer Fuller. Um, I believe Dale submitted a letter of support to the county sometime back. Um, supporting our project and verbally he has said he he really believes that uh what we intend to do to the property is is a benefit to the neighborhood. Um, also, when we found that our garage was too close to that front setback, I drove around the neighborhood fairly thoroughly. And I think we identified multiple properties that have the exact same issue. They're somewhere between what appears to be fifteen to twenty feet from the property line as opposed to greater than twenty feet. So it's not like we are the only structure in the neighborhood that um gets into that that setback. Um. I guess our our intent in this whole project is to w- we love being there. We spend about a fourth of our time at at this home in Bend. It's our second home. Um, our family visits a lot, but the the space available when our family comes is limited. And so we really want to create additional space that we can continue to enjoy this or enjoy this property for years to come. As I said, it's in a family trust because our family really wants to continue the the utilization of this property long after my wife and I are gone because it is such a a beautiful location and and they they come frequently and and in enjoy it a lot. Um. I guess I don't have any uh legal documents to present or any of that. I guess I just really want to show that we are, you know, good neighbors in our area. Um, we do a lot to to keep our place up and in great condition. This just adds value, which adds, you know, increases the tax base to the county as well. Um, and yes, at the end of the day, I am responsible for um the contractor putting that garage in that location. But I guess I I trusted him and I trusted that the inspectors would verify that all of that was in place uh correctly and um and and very disappointed that that we're stalled on on the ability to um connect the garage to the home and create this additional living space. I don't know if there's any questions you would have of me.
Um, I I think I do. Is that is it? Does that conclude the, I guess, the applicant's collective presentation?
Yes, it does.
Okay, um, I have several questions. I don't know which ones might be more appropriate for you, Mr. Bailey versus um for Ms. Burgby, so I'll just pose them and then if you guys want to divide it up however you can, if you need to, uh, that works for me. Um, I'm going to focus a little bit more on the criteria first. Um, and this is, this question is mainly just so I can understand if there's any disputes or not. Um, but the the application and the staff report differ on a couple of things in terms of which code provisions are applicable. And I believe the application says that the um that the there's not a scenic waterway and that the landscape management combining zone aren't applicable. The staff report identifies that they are. I don't know if the outcome is different because I think staff feels that you meet those criteria. Uh, but again, I just want to make sure there's not a dispute. So is it, is the applicant uh agree with the staff report on the applicability of those two zones?
Uh, that's something, yeah, Sarah's better.
Yeah, I can answer that. Um, I believe that if the application does state that the landscape management zone is not applicable, that was a mistake in the application. Um, the scenic waterway, my understanding, and as I recall from months ago communications with some another planner, was a scenic waterway was not applicable. Um, but regardless, if if it turns out that it is applicable and and we were misinformed previously, I don't believe that that causes an issue on our end.
Um, okay, thank you for that clarification. That may be something I asked staff about um in in terms of whether or not the because I think that that leads into whether or not approval from the um from the state is is would be one of the conditions. Um, uh, some follow-up questions, um, I guess maybe these are the more more factual based. Um, there's discussion of the the forty to fifty thousand dollar cost. If this had been addressed at the time of the construction versus what that cost would be now. I guess I'm not clear what the basis for the forty to fifty thousand dollars are at the time of construction. What what is it about um constructing it behind the setback would have required those costs?
Jeff, you want me to take this one?
Yeah, I I guess so. I I know the cost currently. I'm not sure on the the previous estimate.
Yeah, the uh, the initial cost was more related to if the um, if the issue had been discovered during construction. So it's not necessarily constructing the garage in the previous location would have added that cost, but relocating it at the time, I believe, was estimated to cost that much.
Yeah, so the the fix, the fix to it, not the not the initial cost if it had been developed.
I believe so.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Um. The sort of, I guess, the related question to about the costs for today. Um, kind of want to know if you can provide more detail about what that's based on. It it sounded like from the application, it was either moving the entire garage or perhaps modifying the entire garage, but I wonder if you could provide more detail on what the costs are and what that what they're tied to, if they're tied to moving the entire structure or just modifying that structure.
Sure, uh, so I spoke with the um current or the contractor that was hired for the addition that we were designing. Um, that's Ross Built Homes for to get the estimated costs. Um, they estimated that cost to be to tear down and reconstruct the garage, whether it's smaller or the same thing in the same uh spots. They they didn't give me an actual estimate to cut off that fourth roughly four feet of garage um and just do build a new wall because that would actually be more complicated according to them because it would impact sheer walls and and doors and windows and all sorts of things that if we tore it down and reconstructed it, you know, it would be a new construction and so you wouldn't have to worry about the making everything work in the same way.
Okay. Um. I guess the final questions I have, there's probably a couple, but they relate to the actual um setback itself. May I understand the applicant's position that the um measurement was taken from the edge of the plowed road. I mean, do you have any sense of whether or not that's a standard way to measure the a setback? Or anything from a surveyor that would show that that's kind of a prudent way to to measure the the setback from the edge of a plowed road? Or I'm sorry, from the plowed edge of the road.
All I know was in the conversation I had with the contractor that built the garage a few years ago was that the snow on the ground made it that he did not measure from the edge of the plowed road. He measured from what he because of the plowed, where where the road was plowed, he estimated where the property line was and measured from that. Um, so i- it's probably not quite accurate to say he measured from the plowed road. He measured from where he estimated the front property line was based on where the road was plowed, if that makes sense.
I I think I understand that distinction. I understand what you're saying. Um. And I guess this is the part where I'll be a little bit more candid in terms of, I mean, the the difference that the plowed road might have made. I think we're talking a maximum of three point seven feet from where the garage is to where the the twenty foot setback is. Um, the part I'm having trouble getting my head around though is that I think what the record says is that what was approved was a setback that was going to be thirty five feet. So the 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 impact that the plowed road might have had if you were trying to build to twenty feet seems to be a little bit different than if you were actually trying to build to the thirty five feet. And we're talking about it, or I mean, we're talking about getting it half wrong, you know, from thirty five to sixteen point three. So I just, I kind of want to give you an opportunity to explain that a little bit more and maybe maybe through that tell me is the garage as it's constructed, other than the setback, is it, does it have the dimensions and appear the way it was approved in the original approval?
Um, I, yeah, I I guess I'll address that first. We had an architect design the garage to make it match the design of the house. So it's a stick-built garage. It's not a pole barn or anything like that. Um, it's on a foundation with a with a full slab and as um Sarah said, it's got doors and windows and and so forth. Um. My only guess as to why it's so far from the thirty five that he submitted to the county was I know when I discussed the placement of the garage with the builder, there is a power line that comes from a box out on the road to the existing home. And it runs kind of diagonal across the property. He may not have realized where that power ran through when he originally submitted that thirty five foot setback. But based on trying to avoid where that power came through, may have pushed that garage closer to the front property line than he had intended. Um, I, but that's all just based on discussions that he and I had a few years ago and you know, more recently, uh, maybe two, three months ago.
Um, let me check my notes. All right, just in response to one of the comments in your presentation, uh, just about the other houses seem to be either close or over the the setback line. Do you have have you looked at whether or not those were approved or actually measured or have any more detail about how that man has come to be as other than just observations?
Um, Sarah could probably speak to that a little more than I could, but I identified multiple properties that uh potentially um were within that setback. And then my understanding was she went on the county dial site and estimated from that some of those properties, and I think she identified three of them that clearly were within that setback. But but again, Sarah can probably speak to that better than I can.
That is correct. Um, I took the addresses that Jeff provided as the ones that appeared to be closer to the road. Um, and I did go in to dial and measure those locations. Um, and I'm double checking my submittal, but I do believe that those actual addresses were listed in the burden of proof that we submitted. Um, in terms of going out on site and measuring them to confirm, you know, that dial was accurate, I I did not do that. Um, but I will say, based on my experience with using dial, it's usually not six to eight feet off, which I believe is roughly what the measurements were.
Good. Thank you. Um, I think that's all the questions I have for the applicant. Uh, so just um we'll go through the rest of the proceeding. I just want to make, uh, I guess I'll confirm with staff. No one else has signed up to testify either online or in the room?
Nobody.
Okay, um, that means we don't uh need to have a rebuttal from the applicant because there's nothing to rebut. Um, I will, I would like to follow up with staff on one question. Um, and of course, if that yields any information that the applicant wants to respond to, I'll give you that chance, but um, Ms. Mill, if you heard the question earlier about um whether or not to this is a scenic waterway and if the um Parks and Rec are gonna, if that condition would still be necessary.
Yeah, that is correct. The the property is within the Oregon State Scenic Waterway. Um, so it's subject to the provisions of eighteen eighty-four oh nine five. Um, and that's also conditioned as part of the staff report to get approval from Oregon Department of Parks and Rec.
Okay, um, thank you. Ms. Burgby, I'm just in on the off chance you want to respond to that since I'd asked you that question. That that was the issue I was trying to flesh out is that I think the um page three, the burden of proof says that that Oregon Parks and Rec requirement wouldn't be necessary. Staff says it is, so I just, I don't know um if you have a response to that.
I I don't at the moment. I apologize, but it would take too long to go back through my emails and and find the initial communications. Um, as I stated, though, that's, I have gone through that before. It's not um a a major issue on our end to get that approval. It just would take a little bit of time to coordinate with them.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, that is all I have. So unless there's any procedural issues that need to be brought to me, I, we might be done with this hearing. Is is there anything, anyone? From a procedural standpoint, okay. Um, then I will take this matter under advisement. Uh, we'll go, we'll close the rec, sorry. We will close the hearing uh and we will go off the record at six thirty-four P M. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.